Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Ogden City Redevelopment Agency for January 10, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all board members are present. And at this time, we will have Vice Chair Blair lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
The audience, please rise. Repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to have a moment of silence to recognize and honor all those individuals who have been affected by the tragedy that has occurred in our community this week. So if you would please join in with me in a moment of silence. And I'd also like to give just a few minutes to Mayor Caldwell before we begin our agenda.
Thank you, Neil. Chairman, I appreciate that. I would just take this moment to publicly thank the council for all of their support and, more importantly, the community for all of theirs. We've spent the last full week really working on a proper way to tribute and let these officers and these families know how much we appreciate their sacrifice. Unfortunately, sometimes you're able to tell the character of a community in times of crisis. And in this instance, we've had thousands of people come together. You'll see a very, very unique and touching tribute and memorial tomorrow. I encourage you all, if you're interested and can make it, to come be a participant in that. Fortunately, we as a community don't have a lot of experience in dealing with these types of events. Last one was 49 years ago, and so hopefully we don't have another. But I'd encourage everybody to come out and show your support and love for the sacrifice and commitment these people make every single day for us. And so I appreciate everything the council's done. This has been an overwhelming week for a first week, but the team has been fantastic, and they've done some amazing things in a very emotional and devastating time period. So I really appreciate certainly the council and the community and everybody coming together to give these families the support they've earned and deserved. So thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. And at this time, we will have reports from administration. First will be the fiscal year 2011 annual report. Mr. McConkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity of presenting the annual report for fiscal year 2011 to the RDA Board. The Redevelopment Agency has a charge to take on projects in redeveloping both residential and commercial that would not otherwise occur in the community. And it's the only redevelopment agency in the state that was actually created by a vote of the people. Ogden has used the redevelopment tool, which I believe very judiciously. And in the annual report, it gives a summary of each of the project areas. There is a map on page four of all of the project areas in the community. The green project areas--
This is page seven in your reports.
The green project area on the north is BDO. That's certainly our largest project area, 1,100 acres, and has proved to be a very successful project area. I won't go into the history of that, but it was very costly to convert that old military distribution depot into a premier office and business park. And we have used tax increment out there to upgrade the infrastructure and build roads and prepare it to increase the tax base for the community, which it has done, both building the tax base and the employment base. So we're pleased with the success at BDO. Let me just go through the, quickly through the highlights of last year. We created a new project area last year, the East Washington Project Area that is a smaller area. It's just four blocks, goes, it's on the east side of Washington between 20th and 24th Street. The primary purpose of that was to be able to work with the property owners to rejuvenate retail activity along that side of Washington. There has been limited activity. We've worked with a number of property owners and tenants, and we are currently working with several, and we hope that in the next few months that there are significant improvements made to those four blocks. The Ogden River Redevelopment Project Area is, has been a frustratingly slow, difficult project area. We created that project area back in 2002. And in spite of the challenges, that is going to be a premier urban residential neighborhood. And we have a project with South River now where we expect construction to begin within the next three weeks between Washington and Grant. We have a parcel that is, will be presented to the RDA for consideration for sale for a bakery coming up in, probably I could think of the next RDA meeting. The other project, the CBD Mall Project Area, now referred to as the Junction, is, I think it's obvious what is happening over there. The hotel is our latest project, and it should be completed. It's a Hilton Garden Inn, should be completed this summer. There'll be some additional retail and a smaller parking garage developed as part of that project. But that will be a great addition to the Junction. And the condos at the Junction, formerly the Earnshaw Building, is being improved as, you know, as we speak. And we expect that that's going to be a tremendous addition as well. Business Depot Ogden, I've mentioned that one. Lincoln Avenue Project Area, that's down where on 24th and Lincoln, there is a new 100, almost 150,000 square foot office building going in there for the GSA that's being leased to, for IRS purposes. That will be, that's scheduled for completion in March. And there'll be 700, approximately 750 employees in that building. And that will be a tremendous addition to the downtown. That's adding to not only the employment base, but the economic activity that will occur as a result of that. So those are the major activities that occurred in 2011. The financial report that is included in this annual report is prepared by our city comptroller's office. And the audit, these, the financial records for the RDA are audited along with and are part of the city's financial records and audit. I know you have, you'll have a work session for the city's financial audit, and generally we go over the RDA at that same time. But the RDA is following appropriate financial guidelines in the way that it transacts its business. And if you have specific questions about that, I'd be happy to answer those, or you may choose to wait until the work session. We have 23 project areas. Some are coming to an end. And we have in the report, there's a list on page 15, and right before that, 14, a list of the project areas, and it has the expiration date for each of those project There is significance to those expiration dates. And sometimes, I know there's some feelings, sometimes that, oh, won't it be great when they expire? But it is, the Redevelopment Agency is a tool, and one of the only tools that the community has to tackle some very difficult, very difficult projects. And it does build the tax base, and it does build the employment base. And it does it without affecting the general fund of the community, but uses the property taxes that are generated by the projects themselves. So I certainly do not apologize for the number of RDA project areas we have. I think it's a sign of an active community that is tackling the challenges that exist, and it is doing it in a very prudent and fiscally responsible way. So there's, on those two pages, just a summary. And as you get on to the balance of the report, it gives a one-page summary with a map of each of the project areas. Tells you why it was created and what the primary activities have been in those project areas. And I've mentioned the ones that, the highlights for the past fiscal year. Are there any pressing questions that any of you have on your mind that you would like to discuss? Otherwise, there is really no action necessary on this item other than to accept for, for a matter of record or accept for the file.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the fiscal year 2011 annual report for review.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Blair to accept the fiscal year 2011 annual report for review. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Junction Center condominium's parking lease agreement. And Mr. McConkey.
Thank you once again. This particular agenda item was presented to the Board in its December 20th Redevelopment Agency meeting, and it deals directly with a parking agreement for the condos at the Junction or, again, the former Earnshaw Building. And it was the desire of the RDA Board that I contact the developer, which is Beckstrand, and discuss with them the CAM charges and the 25 percent discount that had been negotiated with them. I did that. The, let me just give you just a brief background. Beckstrand is, we were very pleased to have Beckstrand show interest in this building. The building had run into some hard times. The previous owner was not able to complete the project. The bank took that project over. And we had talked to a number of development companies about acquiring that project, and Beckstrand was, I think, head and shoulders above the other companies. And they're a very respected development company. And when they took over that project, they were looking at it both from a standpoint of condominiums or an apartment building. If it were finished as an apartment building, it would appraise for $5 to $6 million. If it was completed as a condominium building, it would be up closer to $14 or $15 million. And I mention that because the property taxes from that are significant to the community. That would be over, if it were a condominium, it would be over $200,000 a year in property taxes. That would be new. It is in the mall redevelopment project area, and so those property taxes would be incorporated into the tax increment and would come until tax year 2026 to the Redevelopment Agency to be used for the obligations that it has at the Junction. So we were very much in favor of the condominium approach and feel that having those residents in the downtown, on the streets, in the businesses downtown would be a great asset to the community. When we negotiated this, and we are asking, when I got back with Mr. Steve Hopkins, who's the president, and we went through the issues, we did come jointly to the conclusion that what was presented to the RDA at its December 20th meeting really was fair to both parties. And so we're asking that you consider the same terms and conditions that were presented in the December 20th meeting. Just going over briefly what that included. The condominiums, we recognized and had planned from the outset, even before the building was constructed, that there would need to be stalls dedicated for the residential purposes if this was to be a residential building. And we did, we did agree on the 50 dedicated stalls on the fourth floor. Those are, that's the top level of the Junction, that's the least used, and it's exposed to the elements. And in a typical parking scenario, the uncovered stalls are not as valuable as covered stalls. And they had asked for a 50 percent discount from their CAM charges. The CAM charges are those charges, common area maintenance charges, that are used to maintain the parking garage, and whether it be snow removal or restriping or repairs, utilities, security, those types of charges. And I thought that 50 percent was a little too deep, although as we negotiated it and came up with the 75 percent, that would cost the project or the Redevelopment Agency about $67,000 a year, between $6,000 and $7,000 a year. And those would be parking stalls that are currently, the CAM charges are being paid by the Redevelopment Agency. And so by, once we sign an agreement with Beckstrand for, say, the 89 stalls, then that shifts the financial burden from the Redevelopment Agency to Beckstrand to pay those CAM charges. And we negotiated the 25 percent discount based upon, one, that it would be paid from tax increment, that, and the discount would be discontinued when there is no longer tax increment available. That would be following tax year 2026. The developer, as he was looking at this project, it was a troubled project. It had a troubled history. There were significant issues that needed to be addressed structurally. There were $1 million, and there's still $1 million of construction liens that they have to deal with. And the cost of construction, as I mentioned, if it's a condominium, there are several million dollars that they're going to have to invest. They proposed that they not pay any CAM charges until they actually sell the condominiums and have a need for parking. And they wanted us to only charge CAM charges on those units as they were sold. We did not agree to that. That would be, I think, a nightmare to try to track that. So we proposed that there be a date certain, that they start paying their CAM charges, and that would ramp up over a two-year period. And they agreed to do that. They also agreed that if they, or we agreed, that they could, if they chose to put a covering over the top level on the fourth floor, an awning of sorts over that parking, that they could do that at their cost, and they would have to maintain that at their cost, and they would have to maintain the, whatever striping and improvements needed to be maintained over the years. And that was part of the rationale of giving them the reduction. So we feel like the 25 percent reduction is fair and reasonable. There are, we are not participating in other ways in that building as far as any cash contribution. There are a number of projects in the Junction where we did participate. We have given free parking to the Treehouse. They were the first anchor tenants to locate there, and we thought that was justified to get things, get the ball rolling. So there have been different ways of helping companies to, to help them make it feasible for them to construct their buildings, and we thought this was a very reasonable way to help Beckstrand. So there would be 50 stalls on the top level. There would be 39 stalls that are undedicated throughout the rest of the structure. And over the time that we subsidized these stalls with the 25 percent discount, it would be $70,000 to $80,000 that we would forego on CAM charges. But in that same period of time, we would be receiving $1.2 million in property taxes. And we'd be using those, that $1.2 million of revenue to pay the $70,000 to $80,000 that would be cumulatively needed over those 12 years.
We also be using that to pay down debt service? That money will come in? We'll also be able to use the tax increment from the property tax--
Yeah.
--to pay down debt service, right?
Yes. The tax increment would be used for, would be used for debt service. We are also using tax increment to pay our portion of the CAM charges. We're paying over $200,000 a year in CAM charges for the stalls that we control at the Junction. And again, that amount goes down as we assign those stalls to other paying entities. I don't know if that paints enough of a picture, but we would ask that you approve that. There is a resolution in the, before you this evening that authorizes the executive director to enter into a parking license agreement. That agreement has been prepared by the city attorney's office in conjunction with Beckstrand's attorney. It's gone back and forth on several iterations. So we feel that it is a good agreement, and we do feel that the terms and conditions are fair to both parties.
Can you review the pedestrian connector, the two stalls designated for that, plus the other two stalls that are designated for--
Yes, there were, when we came before you on the 20th of December, there were a couple of different agreements. One was a, for a chiller agreement, a chiller, they wanted to place a chiller on the parking garage, and they also wanted to have a pedestrian connection up on the fourth level that goes from the garage into the building, so that when people come home late at night, the residents come home late at night, they have convenient access into the condominium building. And we were very much in favor of that. We want all of the projects at the Junction to be successful. We would not want to negotiate something away that would hinder the quality of the buildings or the ability to market the property to residents. So there would need to be two stalls that would be taken out in order to accommodate the walkway that goes over between the parking garage and the building.
There's no charge for that, then?
Let me ask city attorney, can you remember, there is a charge? Yes, there, those stalls, both for the chiller unit that would be placed on the garage and for the walkway, any stalls that are lost, they would be paying CAM charges on those.
Would you reiterate the number of stalls that we're actually placing in their hands?
There are 50 dedicated stalls, and there are 39 undesignated stalls that would support the retail space in the, on the first level--
On the first floor, yeah.
--and on the, and some office space, if they choose to put office space on the second floor, but it would be for their retail space. And they have 28 stalls in their own, in the building itself. Kind of a unique design where the second level is partially used for parking.
So are we saying really that there's two stalls for every apartment, then, or we're cutting that back to one stall that's actually secured for the apartments? Which would be those dedicated stalls on the roof?
We are saying that there is just the 50 stalls for the 40 to 42 units, and they are still, they're still reviewing the number of units they will actually end up with. They have some 3,000 square foot penthouse-type units on the top that they are debating on whether or not they should downsize those.
But it would be the 50 plus the 26 they already have in the building, correct?
Yes.
So we're talking 76 stalls for 40 apartments?
Yes.
Plus the retail?
Plus the retail.
Plus the retail. The units, plus the retail.
Plus the retail, I got you. But I'm just saying, for this particular complex, for 40 condos, they have 26, and we're going to do 50.
Yeah, and whether they use those 26 exclusively for residential, I'm not--
But they're in the building.
But they are in the building.
Yeah, they're in the building.
So would the 50 stalls be--
So would the fifty stalls be cordoned off, kind of similar to the same setup, like they have for the Cowboy Partners?
Liberty Junction.
Liberty Ju, yeah.
Yeah, Liberty Junction on the first floor.
Would it be a controlled access type thing, or would it be indicated by signs?
Yes, yes, it would be controlled access, and there would be fifty stalls on the top level, on the west side of the top level. I think I should, as part of an exhibit to the agreement, there should be a drawing of that.
One of the things that I think I expressed concern in our work session is the fact that we are giving parking stalls a way to private business in, in the mall, or they're using it for, for the fact that they're in the mall. But I think what we're really going to need is a master plan for parking, and I think we, the council all agrees that this is something we've been talking about for some time. And when they're brought to us in numbers like this, it's really difficult to understand exactly where they're all going and how that will affect the entire downtown development, because we know there are going to be more people wanting to come, and parking is going to be limited. And so I think that'd be really one thing that the administration could bring forward, that the council would certainly appreciate, and that is, you know, a master plan for parking, so we know what are we looking at, not only with this development, but the next one that comes, comes in.
And that's, and that's very reasonable. The number of stalls in the, in the garage, there, there is just, you know, a limited number of stalls in the garage. And, and we have, we have allocated them to the different buildings in the junction based on the square footage of those buildings. And so it is not that if we, if we chose not to, we really, if we chose not to allocate any stalls for this building, I'm not sure that's even an, an option. When we allowed that building to be built, we calculated whether or not there were enough stalls to meet their needs in the, in the structure, and we did, and determined that there were. So as far as giving these stalls, we have, if you use the term given, we've given, although they're paying for them, a certain number of stalls to the Wells Fargo Building, for, to the Boyer Company for the retail space, to the Larry Miller Theater Group. We have given stalls to each of them, or I prefer allocated stalls, based upon the total number that we had. And, and this is the number, this eighty-nine was the number that had been agreed upon when that building permit was issued, that we would give them, or we would allocate to them, this number of stalls.
But wasn't that based on a lower number of condominium units in the building? I mean, what, because I, I recall a, a smaller number.
I think it was twenty-eight originally, and then they moved it up to forty-two condos.
Yeah, and I think, um, I'm looking at Mr. Montgomery's earlier summary, and it was still, it was still eighty-nine stalls on that one, but I think there were, the number of stalls has changed. But the, the square foot calculation has not changed.
But, but the square footage calculation applies to the retail space, right? Do we use the square foot calculation for the condo units, or do we base it on per?
Well, there were, yeah, the park, the parking, and, and I can appreciate the desire to spend more time with, with the parking formulas and, and, because there are, in, in the formulas, there is, there's a mixed-use concept that applies, that there can be shared parking. There is a discount of, of, what, ten percent allowed for the, the mixed use. And so there, it's not, if you're in a mixed-use environment, there can be some shared stalls. And so it does affect, when you say how many are needed, there was some negotiation on the residential properties. And they, they felt they needed the fifty, and, and we had Mr. Montgomery involved in those negotiations, and he agreed that that was, that was not out of line, and that those were available. And we do have, once this allocation is made, there, there are still eighty-seven stalls that are unallocated, which means, and the only other property left to be developed is the lot just west of the Treehouse Museum. So everyone else, the new hotel, they have some stalls in the structure, they are building some stalls of their own, but, so all the stalls are allocated out with the appropriate numbers, and we have eighty-seven left for the one vacant lot that's still to be built upon, and we don't have any proposed reuse of that. So if they need more than eighty-seven stalls, they'll have to build those onsite, or designate where they will get those stalls.
I think we need, it's very important for us to understand, as you mentioned, the property tax revenue is two hundred thousand a year, is that right? Debt it would generate?
Yes.
And over the life of the, till 2026, it would generate two point four million dollars in tax revenue, is that right?
Um, yes.
Okay. So that goes back to the RDA, can you tell, does that go to the other taxing entities, the two point four million dollars?
No, it will after 2026.
It will.
But the last year, or the year before, we negotiated an extension of that particular redevelopment project area for, up through 2026, that was another twelve years. And we are receiving a hundred percent of the tax increment. Most of our districts are closer to seventy percent, where, when I say seventy percent, it means the RDA gets seventy percent of the new taxes, the other taxing entities get thirty percent, and then at the end of the life of the project area, the taxes are distributed just as they normally would be. And the city gets their, I don't know, twenty-two percent, or whatever their portion is of the tax dollar.
What, what is that amount, that tax increment, that the hundred percent? How much does that come back to the RDA, then?
Well, that would be, that would be, if, if, and it's just an estimate, because the county is the one that actually appraises the property, and it depends on the exact amount of investment and so forth. But if it were the two hundred thousand, we feel like that's a reasonable estimate, all of that. So the two point four million dollars would come to the RDA to be used for its obligations in the junction.
That's to pay for the junction debt that we have there, is that correct?
That would pay the bonded debt, that would pay the CAM charges, we build an elevator, I mean, those types, any, any obligations that we have at the junction, we can use the tax increment for, and that would be the, the cumulatively two point four million dollars through 2026. And then, then the taxing, the property taxes are divided out.
But when does that tax revenue start? Does it start from day one that they build, or when they sell, or, when does it start?
It's, it's on an annual basis, on January first of any given year is when the county is, has to determine what the taxable value of the property is. So on January first, if the value, right now, that, that project will not be appraised at, at the two hundred thousand, you know, for 2012, because the value as of January first, up last week, was whatever it is, it may be, you know, sixty percent of that, or seventy percent of that.
Could start in 2013, then?
They'll be paying property taxes this year, but the full amount will be next, will be when the project is complete.
Or isn't it eighty percent complete, or something? I, I remember something with the, with the county assessing it.
Well, the county, the county, it's up to the county how they assess it, and they, they have to make a judgment on what percentage complete is the project. If it's a fifty percent complete, sixty, seventy, that's up to their appraisers.
But the building doesn't go on until it's at least eighty percent, I think, is.
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's eighty percent.
Something like that.
Could I, could I ask a question about the specifics about the, the ramping up of their seventy-five percent payment? When do they start to pay? How much do they pay? And how does it ramp up to their seventy-five percent? You said in 2014, of their part of the CAM charges.
Well, if I understand the question, they, in this project area, the taxing entities and have agreed that we can have a hundred percent.
Right, but I mean, you, you said, we're gonna, we're gonna give them a twenty-five percent decrease in the fees.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
But, and they're gonna have to start paying, and then ramp it up for two years?
Yeah, I think, on a, on a debt, on a date certain, and I believe it was, well, it is the date that they sell their first condo, and they get their occupants, well, when they get their occupancy of that first condo, they will have to pay twenty-five percent of the CAM charge.
Okay.
And then eighteen months later, a year later, they will pay fifty percent, eighteen months from the, the anniversary date will be the date of that first occupancy. So.
I just didn't know the specifics here.
That's on page sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine.
So it'll happen over a two-year period. At the end of a two-year period, they will be paying whole amount that they will be paying for the next twelve years.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, thank you for having that additional conversation, I, on behalf of the board. And then, I guess, what I'm just gonna point out, and I think that you've made very clear tonight, is that this all goes on for fourteen years, and then it expires. And we have the opportunity for two point four million to come in as tax increment, possibly, if we're rounding, using.
During, yeah, during that period, and then.
And, and then with the discount, that's just, that is like possibly top number ninety-six thousand, so it seems like a, that you've negotiated a very fair deal here.
It, it could have been worse.
Well, and thank you for helping us understand it. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt proposed resolution 2011 dash twenty-three.
We have to receive some public input on this.
Oh, I'll postpone it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McConkey. At this time, we will accept public input, and specifically for the Junction Center condominium
And seeing no movement, I'll go ahead and make that motion to adopt resolution 2011 dash twenty-three.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Stevens, to adopt the parking lease agreement. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Gockner?
Aye.
Board Member Hire?
Aye.
Board Member Stevens?
Aye.
Board Member Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Board Member Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This resolution passes. Thank you. Now we have the opportunity to have comments from the RDA executive director.
I have no comments, thank you.
Other RDA staff?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
And board members? Okay. Now this is an opportunity for public comment, this is an opportunity to address the board regarding your concerns or ideas for the Ogden Redevelopment Agency. City council concerns should be expressed during a city council meeting. Please state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, I see no movement.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks, and a second from Vice Chair Blair to adjourn the RDA meeting. This is a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Voice vote, yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll adjourn the RDA meeting. This is a reminder that the city council work session will be held immediately following the RDA meeting, and the purpose of the work session is to hold a fact-finding session regarding the Ogden Streetcar Project, and to discuss council business.